Agents to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, our first order of business tonight is a public hearing. And we have Amy Miller here. This is regarding our water grant. So we want to apply for a grant. So Amy?
Okay. I'm Amy Miller. I'm with Cornerstone Grants Management. And as Brad indicated, the town is applying for a grant through the Indiana Office of Community Welfare. This is for improvements to your water system, to hydrants, water lines, and such. We are submitting a final application on October 14th. And if we get the grant, we'll find out around December 7th. The town is asking for $700,000. They are going to be borrowing approximately $685,290 through the state revolving loan program for a total project of $1,385,290. We did try applying last round, which was a spring round, for this fund, and we were not successful in doing it. We're tweaking up our application, trying to make it a little stronger, trying to get some more letters of support. So if any of you can write a letter supporting this effort, great, we appreciate it. That was one of the comments, and where we saw toward asking for some letters of support. The purpose of the hearing is to raise those questions about the project, the open, and what we're looking at.
Any questions or comments regarding this grant this evening? Now's the time to ask it.
Yes. Aside from letters of support, is there anything else that makes your request stronger?
There's things that I'm doing with the engineering firms. The state had suggested getting better quality maps. They want to see, we had shown on our maps where new hydrants are going to be, so they suggested, why don't you show where the existing hydrants are versus where the new ones are going to be, and those kind of things. So we're tweaking up some of those kind of issues. But really, I think one of the things that the state really scores highly is a need. Why does Atlanta need this versus Arcadia or other communities? And getting letters of support is really critical. You know, and those letters can be, it's a financial impact, because obviously, $700,000 is going to have a huge impact on your rates. If you had to borrow the 1.3, I don't think the town would be doing the project. You just have to do that. The rates are already too high, and so this will help buy down in those cases. If you have a concern about, you know, fire suppression, if you don't have a hydrant on your street, that's a health and safety issue, and that's a little concern. So those kind of things that we want to see in letters. We have a few, but we need more.
Is there a deadline for those letters, Amy?
Yes, the applications do October 14th, but there's a lot that goes into submitting on the 14th. I need to incorporate the letters in my narratives. I need to copy it and stand it, and there's a whole process. So I would say within the next two weeks is max.
What do we do with the letters? Do we give them to you, give them to Robin?
You can email me, or you can get them to Robin, or she'll get them to me. They do accept email letters, or if you just want to sit down at the kitchen table and handwrite something out, whatever's easiest for you.
The letters that we wrote the last time, are you going to reuse those, or do you want to update them?
Yes. Nope, I can reuse those.
Has the fire department given you letters?
Yes, I got a letter from the fire chief, but I think we can get it improved. Like, some of the hydrants, the valves don't hook up to the hoses, and the fire chief did not express that in his letter, so they want to see that. So he's, I'm going to contact him, and get a new letter.
I've had a call from the retired fire chief, and I teach at the National Emergency Training Center, so I might be able to help strengthen the letter a little.
Okay. I'll do that. I need your autograph on both these. They're yellow. So I don't know if you want me to stick around, or you want to do it now, whatever.
Sticking around? Okay. Thank you, Amy. All right, if there's no other questions or comments regarding the public hearing, I'd ask for a motion at the close of the hearing.
Make a motion to close the public hearing on the, on her print.
Can I hear her second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Okay, we'll move on. Approval of a five minutes. Our last meeting was held on September 13th. Festival meeting at 6:00 PM. Any additions or corrections to those minutes? I have nothing for either meeting. Make a motion in a three minutes.
On second.
On favor?
Aye.
Okay, move on to our reports tonight. Andy's absent, so I will share with you what he has left. Under water, the plant has treated 595,790 gallons of water since September 13th. That's an average daily usage of 42,556 gallons. Filters were backwashed on the 19th. The August water report is complete and has been submitted to IDAM. Again, Andy's working with the insurance company to get the repairs at the water plant taken care of. Wastewater, he performs daily checks at the lift station ponds and the SSO during rain events. The sewer plant is closed, and we are not discharging. Weekly sewer samples are complete. Our monitoring period for the sewer plant will end at the end of October, and Dryad has started the final paperwork for the compliance plan. Under streets, street repairs related to the phone company have been completed by Ace Hayden. He also states that he'll be meeting with Al Peterson from Curb Appeal on Thursday for the phone company repairs, and hopefully, they will start next week. He notes that new stuff, that new tires have been installed on the shiddy, the truck that he drives. And also, the dump truck will be going to Tipton Ford for shift linkage repairs and a fuel line leak. And under miscellaneous, he said, we'll be finishing the festival cleanup tomorrow. That's all he had on this report. Okay, Murray's absent tonight, so I don't have anything on code enforcement. So we move on to Robin.
I don't have anything.
Robin does not have anything. So we'll go to old business. Is there any old business tonight that we want to talk about?
I'm very tired.
I have nothing. I guess Earth Festival could fall under old business. I just want to say thank you to everyone that had a part in this year's Atlanta New Earth Festival. I feel it was very successful. Heard a lot of positive comments, and obviously, the weather was great. We couldn't complain about that. So I just want to thank everyone that was involved with that.
Did you guys get a bid count?
I did. I did. I lost track at 300. I think that's about.
Part of that was the same vendor walking out.
And that was on Friday, so I don't know about Saturday and Sunday, but, you know, I think it was very successful, and like I said, heard a lot of positive comments, so...
I don't know if you want to, since we have our attorney here, get a fresh set of eyes on our county line situation. Because I got a count on the permits. We were down 19 permits, which is almost $1,000. And if you went up this way, you, it was sparse. The vendors were on private property, and they're all going over there. Here's the Fane Manny, that are going into Tipton County, and we have no jurisdiction. We can't make them play by our rules. So we're losing, they're beaching onto our festival and, you know, capitalizing on it, but we, we've tried getting the county commissioners to give us jurisdiction over that for, like, the three-day period, the setup, and then the two days. And they were, one commissioner is for it, and the others were pretty receptive until there's one lady over there who owns the bulk of it. She has about 100 vendors that she runs out to over there. She's, she makes quite a bit of money off of it. She protested, and so the commissioners just act against her and wash to their hands of it. So I don't know if there's any copyright, I mean, anything that we can...
Well, I mean, there's, not copyright necessarily, but if there is an idea that she's being unjustly enriched off of Atlanta's efforts, so she's going to take in the benefits, she has to put up some of the costs, that'd be the fair way to approach it. But another way, is there any way you can restrict or block off?
Hmm, yes.
Has that been discussed before, even with the commissioners or anybody else?
We've talked about it jokingly amongst ourselves. It's a county road. It's county line, so I don't, I don't know.
Tipton County has the jurisdiction of that road. And we hire the Hampton County Sheriff's Department to patrol and be security here during the festival. And they go up and talk to Tipton County about where they're allowed to close the road down and stuff.
So as folks are coming down, the vendors are lined up on, on the property?
And she has a huge parcel of land that she just loads up. And there's even a business card to where she was representing herself as part of the Earth Festival, and was handing those out.
Yeah, see, that's where I would, A, you can restrict her from doing that. So if she's not a part of it, you say, you're not a part of it, you write a cease and desist letter. You can even do it now, if you know she did it this year?
No.
Not this year, this was in the past.
Yeah, I know.
So if you've done it in the past, you can kind of give her a bump and say, listen, this is what you need to do if you want to be a part of the festival, hear the cost, and hear what you, here's what you need to put up as part of the cost. You can't represent, that you're a part of it because you're not. But other than, than kind of blocking the, the flow of the, of the people coming in, there's not a whole lot else you can do unless you want to try to assert some sort of claim against her for unjust enrichment, saying, hey, we need you to account for all the money you've made off of this, and hear all the costs that you're going to need to be a part of. Hiring the sheriff to block off that part of the road, that kind of stuff that she needs to, to pony up. That's, that's what I would do, just as a first time hearing about it thought.
So how difficult is it to do a claim, then?
Well, I mean, initially, you would just do it as a couple of letters and see how, how much we can shake from. That's what I would do.
Nothing. Nothing in the past has ever worked.
But she's never gotten a, a letter from an attorney, though?
No.
Yeah, it kind of fell through. Did it, got lost in the paperwork?
That would be initially, and then the letter would be, I would, it would be one of these kitchen sink kind of scary ones, where you say, your use of our, and that would be a copyright or trade issue, use of our name and representing that you are a part of the festival when you're not is a problem, and you need to discuss how to compensate us for that, and what you've gained off of that in the past. Setting up and benefiting from the festival when you're not a part of it. Sharing the cost, if you are going to be a part of it, you've got to do what all the other vendors do, and you've got to let me know what they do, because I don't know. Do they pay you a certain amount, a percentage of the, that's usually how it goes.
No, on private property, all they do is purchase a $50 vending permit, and that helps us off, set the cost of all the trash removal, and weeds, and medics, and all of that.
That's the part that's kind of mind puzzling here is, wouldn't cost her a thing. Her vendor would pay the town $50 permit, and we would furnish restrooms over there. We would furnish the EMT paramedics, the police protection, and security, and everything for hers, the same as we do here. But the way it is right now, you know, they're going to go over there and assist anyway, regardless, because they're right there, and Tipton County is cooperating with us closing the road. So they're getting our services regardless of cooperating and paying their portion.
But it's a safety thing, too, because our vendors have to sit six foot off the street, but hers are right on county line.
She has no such restrictions, yeah. And the problem is, if you try to do a court enforcement action, it's a Tipton County city, unless they accept. Is Tipton County at all cooperative?
The sheriff likes the idea, but he won't get into the politics of it. The one commissioner, Van Bever, he is for it, but it's those other two, they just, I don't, I think they agree, they just don't want to do battle with her.
We had an inter-local that was written up, but we took the Tipton County Commissioners to, you still have a copy of that in the file. We presented to them and tried to convince them that, you know, it was just for the best of the community and safety issues. We even had someone that, walking down the road, she complained about having the road blocked, she wanted to put parking up there, too. And Tipton County at one time told us we couldn't block the county line road off, so as there was a pedestrian walking down the road, truck driving by, hit some guy at the mirror, knocked him down on the ground. So, you know, there, there's a safety issue as far as that goes, too, because it's heavily traveled, because there's a lot of parking out to the west, and they all walk down this county line road. So it's heavy.
She's not abiding by the setbacks, so it's causing problems.
And making the vehicles, you know, now they're, now they're letting them close the roads in a different manner now up there, so we don't have the pedestrian issues like we did that particular year. But there was one person struck by a mirror, luckily, that's all it was.
Yeah, right. I wonder if there's...
Could you put up temporary billboards and explain about who's on the other side? Well, we put a sign up this year to explain all of our fees and everything, and how
this went. Well, that got not vandalized, but it got taken down and hidden, and it had to be relocated and chained to the road track, so they couldn't move it. So actually, it got moved out of the area that was actually intended to do the most good. And we've never seen anybody that did.
My kids sent them over, house out those business cards, but I sent my kids over there. We have business cards that have their fees on them. They, they were mean to them, but they did it anyway. Maybe that'll help.
Threaten the IRS or the tax people over there, you know, we're going to have...
Well, yeah, I bet there's some...
I'm sure she's not claiming that, yeah.
They should have a tax number.
That's a good point.
Well, they had the health department out and everything, and they checked the electrical services, and, you know, she has a restroom, she says, back there for her vendors and something.
That was my next thought, is to get, is to get the state, is to see if there's something that she's doing with setbacks even, that's, A, in Tipton County, I'm sure she's not abiding. They have their own rules for vendors and selling food, and using property for commercial purposes, and then on a statewide level, health department, that kind of stuff, that might be, you know, food and safety, that might be a, a way to kind of get back some of that, some of that money. And then to just put in writing the fact that, yeah, we may be entitled to some of that money, because you're not paying, you're benefiting off of claiming that you're a part of this festival, and you, and you, otherwise, you wouldn't be benefiting from it, and we have all these costs that you're not putting into. I think it's at least worth a shot.
You're the council, though, what I mean? I think it is.
And I could also talk to a couple of folks that have dealt with, so we have a guy that has been doing food and beverage law, that's all he does literally for the last 30 years. Like, if there's any loophole or any restriction that's statewide, or that, even in Tipton County, he'll be able to find it.
Manny, if you could look into that for us.
I can do that. I can do that.
I think your suggestions are good.
Very refreshing.
Yes. Take that approach.
Do you have any idea of how much money she would make in, in the weekend?
Sheriff Frauley went over there and asked, he's the Tipton County Commissioner, went over and asked some of the vendors last year how much they paid, and then he counted, and he did the math, and it was $2,000.
That's when you call the IRS and say whistleblower in time.
Well, I'll take a look, especially some of the safety issues are just, you know, problematic. If you're not abiding by, I mean, there's a reason for this stuff. If you're not abiding by the setback, people are going to get hit. People are going to get in trouble.
Does that, do you come in and fill up and stuff?
Sure.
Thank you, Manny.
Yeah, of course, of course.
I apologize, I failed to introduce our new attorney.
Oh, please introduce him.
This is Manny Hersick, I believe I pronounced.
Yes, sir.
Manny's been working with us now since, well, back in July, I believe, he came on board, dealing with fire territory issues. We've been very pleased with his service, so...
He's up, he's concentrating. We have been pleased with his service, even though Mr. Fryers distracted people.
No, I didn't say nothing.
Welcome tonight, Manny.
I appreciate it, I'm glad to be here.
Welcome to be here, and we look forward to you leading us in situations, so...
I appreciate, appreciate the opportunity. I'm glad to work with everybody, and I've liked working with you guys, too, which is, which makes things easier.
Good, good. All right, any other old business tonight?
Yeah, what's the status of our Jackson Township divvy up, the assets thing? What's the status there?
Manny, you want to touch on that?
Sure, yeah, without talking too much in the public meeting about strategy and other things like that, I will, you know, give you kind of a global sense of what we're doing. So we approach this, we need a fair and full distribution of, of the assets. To do that, we need to get at what the real documents are, and what, where the real money is flowed, and what the real assets are. And so what I've been fighting with their attorney about is kind of defining the scope of what, all we need to do that. And ultimately, where we are now, we have most of the property that we know was Atlanta's back, and we have promises that some of the radios and some other things are, that they couldn't find, will be returned or replaced at their cost. There are some other bigger issues, like some of the air packs that we're still fighting over, but at least we know that that's a fight, where we didn't know what we were fighting over at the beginning. So as that's going on, the kind of the tangible property, the stuff we can get our hands on, we're having Jim Higgins, who's our financial advisor, work with their financial advisor, so they can speak the same language, instead of me trying to, you know, talk to them about stuff I don't really understand fully. So they can narrow down what they need, to dig down to see, okay, here's the money that should have been Atlanta's, Arcadia's, Jackson Township. Here's how it should have been spent. Here's how it was or wasn't, and here's what remains. And then we worry about, here's how we split it. So right now, Jim reached out to Jeff Peters, and they're working on narrowing down what all the documents they need. And then what I've gotten them to agree to is, after they do that, our financial advisor is going to basically post up in their office and pull, pull the documents that he needs. Instead of us constantly asking for him and waiting and waiting and waiting, he's just going to go there, post up, and mark the stuff he needs, because he knows, and can identify it better, and then just pull it. And that way, we will be kind of ready to really fight about what the, what the money is. And that's, it's been moving slowly, but it's moving heck of a lot faster and a heck of a lot cheaper than a court action would. A court action wouldn't, at this time, I told you, the council before, at a certain point, we're just going to have to do it, if they're not cooperating. But they have been, and they've been talking up until this point. And a court action now wouldn't benefit anybody but me. So, I mean, really.
Thank you.
So that's why I kind of want to stay this course for a little while, and see if we can get to a point where we go, okay, here's, we have a decent sense of, of what is there, and then we can worry about distributing it. Arcadia hasn't been participating, so my next step, and I already emailed their, um, Jackson Township's attorney, we need to get Arcadia involved and get some skin in the game here, because they can't just sit back and have us do all the work. So they need to give us an inventory of what they had in, and, and then we can kind of all work together like we're supposed to, like the inter-local says we're supposed to. So that's kind of my next step. I was getting a little angry that we were taking the whole burden on ourselves, essentially, with Arcadia just kind of sitting back. That's basically it. Does anybody have questions?
And one thing, Jim Higgins, we have worked to our advantages. He came from State Board of Accounts, he was an author before he went to London, so he knows what to do.
And he also reached out to State Board of Accounts, Andy Schenk, as, as Robin has on several occasions, to get as many documents as we can, straight from them.
Has he heard from Andy Schenk?
Not that I know of. He's on my call list tomorrow.
We appreciate your efforts in regards to that, Manny. Hopefully, it will work out in our favor before it's all done then.
Yeah, and that's, that's the hope.
Then, the next, I guess, the next question is, how's our volunteers department shaping up?
Once they get all of their equipment, they can start, like, actually...
Working?
Yeah, they, I think they've had, like, meetings of all the people that are wanting to come on board and join, but they can't, they can't respond until they have proper equipment, so I think CPG is helping them get reestablished, too. Todd would have to update us on that, but they did a good job for Festival, though. They did, they all stepped up.
All the guys who are, you know, interested in being back on the department, was here at the festival and working, and all. I got a question, and I'll ask that for you. With DLGF stating that everything was to stay the same until some of the stuff, issues get resolved, should we reinstate a volunteer fire department for the town of Atlanta until we hear different from the state level?
Yeah, I don't think we're going to get any help from the state. They basically folded out of fear or whatever this summer, after we already had an agreement with them.
Right.
On what the issues, on what the issues were, so I wouldn't, I wouldn't expect them to help us at all.
So with us forming and going ahead and establishing, Atlanta Volunteer Fire Department won't jeopardize any of the services or anything that is going on at this present time, that is ordered to stay the same until further notice?
Right, it shouldn't.
Okay, I just wanted to check on that, let it not cause any issues with the services or...
And I can also make sure with Jim that there's not going to be a hitch on, on that level, too, with DLGF, as, as we form the volunteer fire department, if we need any support down the line.
Okay, because my concern is, is, you know, they stated that if Arcadia wanted service in Atlanta from them, we would sign a contract, and we refused. Arcadia did, and, you know, I just don't want them coming back saying that we went ahead, took it upon ourselves, formed a department, now they want to start in charging us for ALS and ambulance service up here, because we now have chose to go off on our own, and now we are separate entity.
The department's not operational yet, we're not, we're still not reestablished fully.
That's my concern.
So, yeah, so as far, as far as we're concerned, right now, it's status quo. They have to respond when they're called, and then...
And our, our money, that is, that portion of the fire territory is what they're partially operating off of down there, so we were, even though the territory has dissolved, that money that is being collected for this year is what they're running off of down there this, this last year's taxes.
At least in part, at least in part, yeah. So, I mean, and that's, they know that, and they know we're after it.
And that's, that's interesting, that's going to be all part of what Jim's looking for and everything else.
Absolutely, and not only that, but everything, you know, we need them to dig, because we can't take anything at face value anymore, so we need them to kind of dig down. There's a fine line, I don't want them to dig down the last five years, because it's going to cost you guys a ton of money, maybe more than what you end up recovering. So there's a certain, and Jim will know when there's a certain time to stop and go, okay, I think I'm satisfied enough that we, that what the documents that I have, I can piece together what our proposal should be. Because at the end of this, we're going to basically put together a proposal saying, okay, this is how the distribution should go. This is what we're entitled to, this is what you're entitled to, this is what Arcadia's entitled to, please distribute.
And that's when the court action starts.
And that, right, and then, well, really, then if they don't, then we go before the court, and you go, Your Honor, this is what we did, and I don't know why they're refusing, and the judge is going to look them funny. and you go, your honor, this is what we did and I don't know why they're refusing and the judge is gonna look them funny. But if we go now, and why it's problematic to go now, is that we have to do all that within the court action and everything at that point is more expensive, because then I have to worry about getting it into evidence. I have to worry about who's gonna come testify. I have to worry about preparing everybody to testify. And that just becomes a whole, you have to worry about requesting everything formally and waiting on and waiting on and waiting on and then fighting in court. So it's becomes a big
Correct.
A, a big issue. But that's, that's a valid concern.
Any other questions or comments tonight in regards to our issues with the fire department?
Can I ask?
Yes, you may.
I understand that the county commissioners are not responsible for fire protection, but they are for medical. So what, has any, can we talk to the county commissioners to see if what assistance they can be in this matter? Financially or...
It's my understanding, and maybe you can, Johnny, you or Robin can help me with this. A few years back, they no longer wanted that responsibility and that was the whole purpose in forming a fire territory. And I think they were instrumental in helping with that financially in the beginning. And now that, you know, the fire territory has resolved, dissolved, you know, they're not...
Seventy, seventy percent of former work on what a fire department does was medical related.
That's correct.
And River View's the county hospital and K F point four. And the, I'm assuming that the physician who's responsible for all the ambulance system in county emergency medical services is out of really, it's just a guess, but...
I believe you're correct.
So it's the way most systems are set up, so they have skin in the game. It may not, there's things they may be able to, to suggest, explore and add. Politically, they may not want to. Sometimes you do things because it's right and not because it's...
Well, fortunately we do. One of the county commissioners is, he has been really involved with the town of Atlanta. Mark Airbrenn, and that might be something that Mark can, you know, possibly help us with. Appreciate that, appreciate that conversation. Sorry, any others? Okay, we'll move on to new business tonight. On the agenda, we have a, I assume a resolution. That's correct, right?
Yeah, it's really kind of a challenge, because we did the bingo, the sponsor bingo, so we had a first, second, and third prizes, one hundred and fifty and twenty-five dollars on Saturday and Sunday. So we really need to put that in a resolution, because we came out cash prizes. Although most of them did get claimed anyway, so it all got received back in, but that's what it is, so. And it was paid for out of the sponsor, from the money that was, came from the sponsors.
Okay. So how much actually went out?
Well, two hundred.
Two hundred dollars?
One way or another, it went out. So next year, everybody plays sponsor, we can go first, the other.
Okay. You all have this resolution before you, did I hear a motion to approve this?
Can I make a motion to approve that resolution?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Did I give you an adjust?
You did not.
Okay, well, it wasn't an adjust, but it was for a leaking toilet, so I emailed her and said that it's likely that it's not gonna be approved, so.
Got that word.
You've, you've never approved them before, so if you want me to grab it, I will. Their bill, I mean, it wasn't absolutely on the bill, it was, you know, a little bit above average.
Yeah, unfortunately, it was, it runs down the, into the sewer, so it's not likely leaked into the ground, so. I would tend to agree with you, Robin, that we, we would have to deny that one. Does anyone feel differently?
When it goes down the sewer, you have to treat it at the wastewater plant and has a whole discussion about adjustments. And if it happens, if it doesn't go down, then it costs us pretty, we're gonna do an adjustment before we make the sewage end of it.
You may, I'm sorry. Is there any other business from the floor tonight?
It's heavy, heavy trash day, it's October seventh.
Yes.
Friday then.
Heavy trash, yeah. Next Friday.
Next Friday, heavy trash day. All right. Anything else? Do I hear the motion that we sign the claims during the meeting?
Make a motion, we sign the claims during the meeting.
My second.
On favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.